This study session of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:01 PM on Tuesday, May 17th, 2022, in Room 137 of the Edison Building. Interested members of the public are welcomed and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/ISD535, where the livestream video may be found. This board acknowledges that this site and all our PS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are school board members and Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex-officio member. I have asked Director Amundson to please act as the clerk for this meeting and call the roll.
Director Amundson, here. Clerk Barlow. Director Garcia. Treasurer McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
Director Workman.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we provide an opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
2.0, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
A little approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Agenda is approved. 3.01, Strategic Action Plan Discussion. Dr. Pecel.
Thank you Chair Marvin and Board Members. The first hour of tonight's study session is actually going to be spent with board members rotating from station to station as laid out in front of us. And the purpose of each station is going to be to give each board member an opportunity to ask questions, have a dialogue with members of each of the working groups that have contributed to the development of our strategic plan. The purpose tonight is, in many respects, to clarify what the working group's intent is, what their conclusions were, and to provide board members with a solid foundation for the presentation of the whole plan that will happen at the regular board meeting on June 7th, and the vote on the plan that will happen on June 21st. And so, it's time to use, as board members and working group members see fit, but we will keep ourselves on schedule because we know we have another important topic tonight. Before I turn it over to Denise Moody, who is our Director of Strategic Planning and Continuous Improvement, and who has done a fantastic job coordinating the development of the strategic plan, which we will really applaud when we get it passed. I want to thank everyone who has been one of the working group members. You all have been tireless in putting the hours in that you've put in to this plan. This is really a shared plan, and that's significantly thanks to all of you. And of course, we only have one or two working group, or three, I think, in one table. Members of the groups, there were many more people that were part of this process, and they are listed in the front of the plan. And so, with that, absent any questions for me, I'll ask Denise to give board members a sense of how we should work the rotation. And I'm going to go take my place, along with the members of the cabinet, as a note taker at each table, because we're going to capture board members' questions, board members' thoughts, and then we'll use the feedback we get tonight to shape the presentation of the plan that we'll make on June 7th, and any additional information that you want to consider the plan on June 21st. So with that, absent any other direction, I'll turn it over to Denise.
Thank you, Dr. Pecel. It's really exciting to be at this point tonight, and I just want to thank everybody for all the time and effort that you've put into bringing this document to life. As we get started, I just want to orient people to the copies that you have in front of them. There are three sections to this, so it looks really long, and it is really long, but it is a compilation of the three documents that we have. So the first section is actually the Strategic Plan Report. And then, about a third way through, you will find our focus group summaries, so all of the research that we did with focus groups. And then the last section is around the survey data. So, we're focusing this evening on that first part, but the rest of it is there for your reference as you are looking at it. But I found it helpful to tab, so there are stickies on there if you want to, on your tables, if you want to just tab where those different sections are. So how this is going to work tonight is, everybody who is already sitting at the tables is going to remain there for this first hour, and we are going to be asking our board members to rotate through tables. You're going to have 10 minutes at each table to bring your questions, things you want to talk about, things you're looking for clarification on, on each of the focus areas. So, when you get to the table, you'll see there's a sign. So this table right here is our teaching and learning area. So we'll be focusing on that area of objectives and talking with this team about any questions that you have, or they have some things that they may want to highlight too. So you'll have 10 minutes at each table. I have my little bell. I will ring where we are at, maybe nine minutes and 30 seconds, to allow you to kind of wrap up your conversation. And then the board members will stand and will rotate, this is clockwise, right? Clockwise throughout the room. Any questions? Yes.
Can we have a paper copy like that, too?
They are at the table for you. Yeah, yeah, there is a paper copy at the table.
I think you deserve that.
Oh, thank you.
I could probably just tell others, Director Barlow is dealing with a car malfunction and is trying to join us tonight, so we may have an additional board member who will just come into the rotation. And because we're one short, you'll have one table to wait for a board member, but we'll be at full capacity if he makes it here this evening.
Yes, so you're not assigned to start at any table, so just grab an open seat as we get started, and then I will let you know when it's time to rotate. Thank you.
Yeah, they're rejecting us. Are you? I'm just a note taker. I'm sincere about that, so you guys go ahead.
I don't know. My first question would be, what do you think that is the most important?
Yeah, I mean, the working about here and the types of discussions.
I do things that everybody felt really, really strongly about, like everybody agreed and I had to put this aside. Or things that you had to compromise on. Something in monitoring was turned into a vulnerability.
To go for the average of our peer group, it would be $14.7 million more per year. If we go to the state law maximum, that's more like minimum cost is $50.
No, and it, I mean, this makes, to me, makes perfect sense. But was that sort of with the larger community merit health, or was that a robust thing?
Neither would totally wipe out our $23 million. There are other things in here too. Without there, it's exactly the same. While here too, if the state could catch up on their state aid. They're talking about doing extra special aid.
Last night I was thinking, I have to ask one intelligent question, and I just have one for anything.
So, I mean, that's 15.6 million dollars.
So what were the biggest issues, sort of, that you were?
Yeah, I come up, if we got, if the state picks the formula, the general had to go to 15.
We had 11.
Seventeen and a half. We got to the peer average of referendums, another 14. That process, you went away, that's 15 more. EL process, you have 51 million more in funding, you have 23 million dollars. So if not, then it's not, we get, hopefully erase the deficit and just be up to, you know, normal. But we're just in a positively operating system. We've got to solve the 23 million, we don't have the 51.
Doing that and more.
So you could measure the addition of schools?
I think so. I think, I think it's, I don't think we're going to get the 15.6, but you know, another couple million or so. Yes, there is local optional. I don't even really talk about that in here. Because most, every district in the state now takes the maximum, you get on that 700 million. So, at this point, really, the only difference is how much. This is, this is the one we got in 2015. The 2019 one was to pay for the heat.
I think, part of that, I would say, that's the longer.
Yeah.
Well, and in my mind, and this maybe isn't true for you or for your group discussion, but in my mind, there's data, and there's, okay, right? So just giving everybody access to the data isn't going to be helpful. In fact, it could be harmful. To me, it is, take the data, make it understandable, make it. I don't want to say intuitive, but not, not counterintuitive. I'll use the double negative tense because it seems to me, I've looked at tables of data and said to myself, well, I don't know what this means unless I have this point of reference, or I have, tracking it over time, or unless I knew something changed, the creation, dip.
I mean, I was just listening today, back in the day.
I think we might have given wider an example. So that, that would be my concern, is, to me, you said data decision, to me, there's that intermediate step, which is the interpretation and the understanding of it. So that's, that's. Yeah, I mean, it's the font, the graphics, or graphics that I'm using on this right now. But you have to download it onto your computer, like it's not a standard. Yeah, so the, you know, the building relationship. In some ways, I'd rather see us not give so much access to the data, but give access to the conclusions that are down from the data, and then provide the option to access the data to support the conclusion. I don't know that a lot of, a lot of data is actually. Having, having the profession, you see the interpretation.
At least try to be more transparent this year, for the first time I put. First schools, so this is how we're doing it. Going to a model that this would be more bullying of this, and the saying, hey, you have 100 kids.
Come to Minnesota. Exactly.
Here's the dollars, you know, you can tell us how to look.
They want to be able to glance at the data. They don't want to have to pick it apart themselves. And if you can provide that narrative first, it gives them context when they then look at the data and they don't jump to the wrong conclusion. And then what happens in, you know, the political side of it, is that a false narrative gets started, then you can never shut that down.
I've got a graph on that, too.
There's almost no way to. It gets put into a graphic meme and shared on Facebook, and you can never stop it.
But now, when you average it all together.
So, back to the objectives, is there anything you think I should know about any one of these things on this? The importance behind the discussion, you know, the strength, is it the passion behind it? Or the compromise behind it, or is it, you know, the history? Or is it pretty much what I see it as?
I know, I know, because that will lead to more downsizing. You have a 93 classroom, 18 bathroom, house with pool.
And I would just be my own little personal plug to pass along, is that my son went to Lincoln, and that that's sometimes missed in that, you know, the upper or the middle school. That they're not, they're not a father of someone like John Adams, that they kind of get left over that. We approved it, and I think it's real.
Exactly.
But I was thinking more about, like, the rep planning pieces of things. And I guess I was, maybe it's along the lines of the core just, like, when you're choosing your own path to high school. And I know that that's hard for everybody.
So, 9.3 has three sections. The third one doesn't look that challenging. What do you think between the first and the second? Strength in the processes of developing a solution. If we knew how to solve problems, we would have already done it, right? Thank you very much. All right. Achievable, but yet, still enough to improve. Well, this whole thing is not very focused. I mean, there's so many things in here, like we want to save the world. All right, well, I think I was supposed to have moved that.
So this is a really hard question, so take a minute. If you could just, you know, one, you're like, I don't know, it's different times in about, like, 30 seconds on the L of the year.
Same came up this morning as somebody who's really doing, having data. What are you doing with, yeah? With fast speed, it's getting like, it's going to get better. I mean, I was looking at this thing on Channel 11, they interviewed, I don't know, 12 schools in there, so.
Not to interrupt you, because I'm sure you're talking about. Okay, so what I asked at the last table, which maybe isn't the greatest question in the world, I like to know things like, which ones of these things have the most passion behind them, or the most agreements, or the most. Because not everything was just universally agreed upon that makes the final cut for needed. And needed a lot of. Yeah, you're welcome to stay. Well, which areas are we talking about at this table? So, my.
And they're getting to your 300, you know, in their regular class.
Well, so that would be my question. I mean, are there things that didn't make the final cut? Are there things that needed a lot of ironing out?
So they've been doing four times, so we.
Comes with an understanding or an agreement. Are there things that missed the cut?
Wait, for the year behind, wow.
So many more resources, and they've basically, I think, cheated. But, so I think we need to do a better job of explaining it.
That should be presented to all the principal beds, is one way.
About doubts that were expressed about achievability, if anything, or?
And they're quite, exactly, absolutely. Right, so, I think. Well, one thing we've been working on in summer is what's something reasonable to measure in the short summer program. Right, so we don't over tell our story, or under tell our story, what's right on. Worked on this number talk idea that if we introduce number talks in every day. We can actually practice that mindset, engagement. So, I would be interested, because we want to use summer as a means. Or innovation, so how could we take, you know, our compensatory dollars from the state and figure out how to get more people comfortable with that idea and do it on the summers. Is there a way to summer, make that idea that you're working on? Yeah, or, well, it could be that, or, like, we talked about, if we only do 18 days of programming, what's a reasonable set of growth to look for? So I guess my question back to you is, would there be a way in that system to measure 18 days worth of growth? And then, but even the idea of use the system, use the communication, use the interventions, look at growth, adjust your practice, all the things we want people to be able to do, how can we work it in the lower stress summer environment? Where they're more likely to take risks?
Feeling pretty good about the final product? Are there anything on this page of staffing capacity that rises to the fact that we can't do all of the things in the plant?
That's what we need, because we also want summer to be highly experienced, outdoor field jobs. Yeah, that's why the number talks ended up being kind of a cool idea, that we could do it to 10 to 15 minutes on a daily basis, and then see if, it's kind of the same idea about what's one intervention, custom for the student. So, I'm actually thinking next year, so if we start planning in September. For next year, possibly, think about, is that a learning potential for staff? You know, it's just so hard. Fifty-five minutes in the summer, I don't know. I'm always looking for, next year, next year. How do we do that? Because we don't have staff that are energized and passionate and empathetic and patient. I personally, there are a couple of initiatives we've been teaching with one year, we never had this complete issue before.
I know that the point is to oversimplify everything so it fits in a tiny little box, and if there's confusion about what it means, it's not going to tell anybody. I personally, I think there are a lot.
That's what Peter's going to do for us.
We don't, too. Personal preference, which is anything is kind of just barely made the cut that we, you know, not that we don't keep working first, it's that we make it make it out of the department.
And in fact, looking at a lot of the things, a lot of the planning, and so. Well, if you're, that's such an equity piece, right? So if your kid loses three months every semester, you know, and my kid has enough, okay, you know, experiences to avoid that, well, now every year, and three months further. Right, right. So the curriculum piece is interesting because I'm looking for one that is structured to. Infuse the learning, but in student interest areas. So how do you get the, rather than here, we're gonna read this. You know, and we're gonna go through this all together, how do we create something that's flexible, especially at middle level to the kids so they stay in a tent?
Hopefully continually shining in our light. The school board's job is monetary component, how often do you monitor it and we don't talk about it anymore?
We could earn millions, literally. No, seriously. I don't know, I just asked, I'm in this Wallace Foundation.
That's my problem, I don't have a problem.
ELE curriculum and an interest based math curriculum, I have that written in my notebook from today.
Not, not that there's anything we should announce.
And why are kids get bored in school, that's not how things relevant in the I have. As big as I said. And especially since they had a year of. You know, they saw what it can be like not to have the box around them, literally, and they don't want to go back. We did, but we used to prefer summer innovations.
I'm not surprised.
The value of time to break brains together.
Oh, I know. Or you're not, when you don't already have something on the agenda.
You know both these.
I know both of these people.
Seriously. I should. I'm just questioning. Coming to. Um, alright, so the data advisory board. Fascinated by that concept.
These guys were on the team, I'm just the.
Oh, sorry. I used to ask you questions, anyway, oh, no, how did that come up?
Okay, so.
I mean, I think.
Yep, yep, yep.
Well, also the top.
Going to. And that's, that's the thing, and I love that. How is the place that they're at? Getting to know the families, inviting them in and then going to where they live and.
So when I read something like, build a positive, build a final, and face this wrong.
And I'm not sure if this is the place where this, how do we get some big corporations to. We think there's also a high V, that's, that's not family. And. Be generous about it, I bet kids meeting that and family that, we're leaving, or do they just have you make our plays over when we get to our, our literature? So that they start stepping up. Charting right now. Was it the world's best, world's best workforce yesterday, the, with the bar and the line and all that, and I. Date, I thought. Yeah, exactly. Right, 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 no, no, but. Everybody else see they're like very responsible. Thinking about the conversations we've had at policy already, is that, is it a data advisory board? Just, that makes recommendations to the, like, is it like the community budget finance committee? Do we write it into policy? Do we do a charge statement? Right, so it's not a committee that's been, it's one of those advisory committees, like special education. Been looking at, yeah.
I think the district has focused a lot on the. Yeah, trying to find. I think a lot of the students, or the district has. Been working hard on. Um, so these are things that are themes that have been throughout the years.
And I mean, for me, this has always been.
I mean, it's a non.
But they have the missing, the missing link. Yes, and. They have a great idea. Think it's great, but we really know. Get that's great to be hard work. And then we have to make this issue of the funding again. Are we actually a game changer for. Yes. I, yeah, so and.
What, there was that, or if they would volunteer.
Seems fundamental, but we have to ask the person. My person Susan's job was to be. Doesn't, it's not just a magic. It's very cheap. And it takes time. Well, we just look at all the data.
No, not sorry, to me, that's one thing about.
And I think every time we did one, it was like. To convince them or give them a status if that's how they're. Are they, are they just, when we were doing the SRO and the boundaries, all the same time. But I think. You know, if it's a beginning of. Well, and there's the thing, you know, we can tell. Oh, you know. You know the song. It's gonna be for this, and then it's gonna be for this. Right.
Exactly.
Exactly.
That are.
Right, exactly.
Staff.
So on the front end, they can say, it's not that I didn't, on the back end, they can say, I didn't hear about it. We'll be able to really think about.
So do you feel like the final product does a good enough job of adjusting?
We talked about peace and family engagement, about translation.
I do, I think that there's a good balance of.
Family engagement. You know, they give the data here so that every school, it's hard to communicate. I think that's just gonna have to be a focus, is how do we engage.
We're down here.
Yeah, with the language barrier, with the experience that this is trying to guard. Right, like, why don't we need to know this piece of data?
Then was there anything from previous conversation?
Deal, or they want to come and live here, you know, if I'm living in, anyway, maybe. Right, right, yeah. At the front door. I like feeling the discussion, I'm just a note taker, but I like. As developed. Right, right, yeah. When you guys were talking, that's a really good, that's a really good thing in the groups with non-district invested members, so community members, parents. How, how was the enthusiasm for, for this area? Was it something where like, yeah, we gotta do data, or was it, you know? Did everybody recognize that somebody had a duration of whatever that CEO, whatever it was. But it was always like, hey, I'm gonna break to know you and goodbye. It's gotta be a hard ask, and it's gotta be maybe a deeper relationship and a more sort of. Yeah, yeah. Right, right, right. So it's like from zero to whatever. I believe in change based relationships.
I'm not writing that back. Well, then my question would be, why is it in here?
Back to thinking. The other thing that I think is gonna be an ongoing challenge is communication, because.
Somewhat, yes.
How?
If it's.
Especially. Yeah, that's even the day. I, I, I do think that maybe even using a way that.
Reassert touch.
Gets the information that is.
Focus on it or.
If that's another.
But if we're already doing it, it doesn't make sense to me to have it inherently. I also think, you know, it's hard to really give a lot of focus and emphasis to something. It's hard to monitor it as a school board, our job as school board is to monitor the progress of it. How can it be new that with all those things we'll have to talk about? There's so many.
And I'm objective ten, yes. Figure out the right lens and the right tool to do that, I think, is gonna be interesting, because again, that has to be a system. I mean, right now, like, even in policy community, and so we, uh, we're still catching whether superintendent or school board should be capitalized. So we're gonna need equity, we're gonna. Every day.
Was this slow?
Thirty minutes in a middle school, they'd be like, oh, yeah, teach my kids the right way, the right thing.
So I don't know what other people have been asking you.
And I should share that this is my committee, so whether that's good or bad.
Do you know the history?
I do. Oh, thank you. It's my supplemental message to all. I was actually kind of curious, and you guys may or may not know this, that this wasn't our original title.
Just give me a sense of where the other name was, but it was part of the.
Right, that was the mid, but this is the section of the plan.
I think it was measures.
So the committee had one name, but the plan has it under.
A different topic, right? Related, but it seemed like the others, though, didn't have the. Well, the others have the same title, I guess. But I understand, you know, kind of how that more.
What, what else had a lot of.
As, as we went through the process.
I mean, not that any of them are, they're all, you know, important, but. You know, some people, you can just tell they.
And everybody's always. I don't have to refresh, because I can keep all those thoughts in my head.
Will we have our panorama data by then? Right, yes.
There's some communication there, yeah, like, is there any way we can get it?
And it was good to hear this, like, for example, that wasn't a.
I'm kind of curious about the nine point three, nine one and nine two seem to really fit with what.
A lot of times.
Kind of more strict or what we were talking about in the committee. But the nine three is kind of more that innovation focus that, I think, kind of came out of the whole process. What things went into the thought of creating a specific initiative?
It's a limited scope topic, or because.
Kelly's still around.
Yeah, Kelly's still around.
Really, I've been thinking, I've, I've thought.
Okay, how's it going?
But I think one of the things is, again, it goes back to where the objective is, is to work consistently. So when I look at strengthening the process for setting goals, is providing consistency around that district while. So that we can develop, you know, the. I feel like that consistency is somewhat, but it's not really.
Is that like a direct alignment, not like this. Yeah.
And I'm assuming that within our budget.
Is there anything else you want to highlight or tell me about?
And that's the lack of.
We have the money. Something we can achieve.
Throw at anybody out there, and I won't, but some of them aren't. So there isn't really, I, there isn't really. Yeah, and I think that this is.
The innovation part of it, right. And I will tell you that the one word that I wrote to prep for today was measurable, that that's what I've been asking around here. Um, and I get that, you know, that your position is a big part of this, but are there other things? It's your possession, it's innovation, are there other things that we need to be thinking about?
Like when I go to the doctor, I don't know if you guys do the same. They say, do you like to learn by reading, do you like to learn by hearing, do you like to learn by doing? Like, I need all of this people to really think in. I think a similar perspective can be applied to communication. Um, you can't just do it one way. You can't say, well, it was on our website, whether you should go. Something has to force me to, to, to go to it and look at it. Yeah.
Professional development, yeah, everybody else. And how do we, how do we. There's so many. To take that to that. Can we make sure that we're responding. To your.
We've already talked about it.
Gonda.
Somebody else.
It's, it's part of the leadership.
It is. What I found in districts.
Well, stop or call it to say, yeah.
Or even like, that's not, that's not the leader strength, so they're gonna delegate that to somebody else.
So like, you have. It may be to do a little video around it, but I think.
Yes, yes, I think the thing has been.
The other thing I'd say with all of this, it was really simple.
So, kind of, if you might, don't fight it. And maybe take it slow.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of.
Well, and that's.
It's always an additional layer.
It's always an additional layer.
On my step square.
How do we provide?
We stood up.
It's fine, it's fine, it's fine.
You lost me a little bit on what you're talking about, about assessments. So, you're, you're talking about, um.
Asking out what our schools can do, what you can do for us, you can.
But not, but not dependent each curriculum, like each classroom has assessments for what, for, for what, you know, the. Not that level, it's the higher level.
For me too.
I called mail.
I think that's. I think that's. And it doesn't have to be.
Somewhere in here.
I went to mail and the first thing I did, when I got to school, I went to establish. You're gonna need to get that checked out, like it does.
He's talking a little bit. Which helps give us that. But our teachers.
I, I don't even know how.
And I suppose that's different at the elementary, not at the secondary.
No, I've done it at both levels. I was in high school. It's.
Is it harder to manage at the high school, you know, with so many different classes?
Yeah.
It's, it's more segmented in some ways.
It, it can be, especially when you get outside of your required classes, for sure.
That's what I think.
Yeah, definitely. You don't need to. It's case of like very little. See, there's something, we need time, we're not doing the job. No one across the country.
Can I?
And I know those are the ones to follow.
You gotta hold it flat and then around the outside.
Yeah. I'll do it to think about. How to solve it. And I think, yeah, there is, I mean, I think there are.
Yeah. It's really hard to get your head around that, though.
Yeah.
Well, I suppose too, in, in, in getting higher ed instructors to change their ways. My, my.
It goes by difficult. The higher ed, they are the working.
Well, not, you need to keep it just like the arts, different from that. And how do you, how do you figure those things out? At a principal level, you know, when you.
Are these some examples? With ours? We did that with our.
I am thrilled to see how, how they.
And it was funny because they had to.
Right, I mean, right. It's just. Thinking about it.
Yeah.
I don't wanna.
I come back and I have.
Oh, yeah.
Right. Yeah.
I was not to let.
All right, she's gone. Thank you.
Right, yeah.
Like.
Denise, Denise, Denise was over there. Somebody stand up and start. Okay, just someone. Wait, I'll turn. She's a really good.
Well, I heard, I heard that.
Maybe brings a lot of. Things that might be hidden, but we can't really function without. Okay, so I have two.
That's just the song, Ben.
Put that on the notes.
Amy is great.
Amy is awesome.
What was the thought?
I thought he heard that.
Maybe Scott could.
I don't know. Did you just do what I just did? I'm gonna.
Your what?
Okay, children, let's, let's go.
Okay. You're back on the.
All right, so I have two questions, and the first one is probably the, the more difficult of the two. If you could distill your work to one or two most important takeaways, like you're giving your thirty second elevator speech. Cause we've done this huge strategic plan. What would you say?
Can I just move to this area of what format do you have measurable goals set yet, or is that still something that needs to be in the next phase of what we're doing?
Are they from like all over?
The highest ones. Yeah, probably.
Yeah, I have mine on, if I don't recognize, it'll kinda ring and I'll say spam likely.
What you said earlier was much of.
Data, but.
Ideas about how to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's why some of the, like, talk.
Yeah, they have to have a story around it, and not just the, oh, here are some numbers again. I don't know what this means.
Our data's down, or our data's off.
And I think a lot of my top topics are the what to do next part, the positive school project. So, what's, what's the plan now, now that we have this?
I taught orchestra in Rochester Public Schools for many years, and one of the observations that I had back then was.
I went and looked at that after you said.
Collected all this data, and then it did. It was like, would you guys just stop it? You know, it's such a waste of time if you, if you're not collecting the right kind of data, and then you have a plan for how you're gonna use it and make it better. Okay, so we're on the.
She should.
And I don't know.
And still, for me, still.
Were there any? So that's.
Kinda been used.
Okay.
From data, you know, data. And all this data, and it's like, what are we gonna do with that?
And I should.
And then we start making.
Fix it.
So that, that's one of the. Other one is. That's what you were. Explored originally.
Pushed off.
Yep, and then, um, other one.
It doesn't go to the next page?
And then you come back, none of the issues are resolved. The student is.
There it is.
Every level.
Was that Willow?
And then we move on, and of course, that. More trauma for the.
Power measuring it.
Pulsed. Or, 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 or.
So would you see a wall before the staff to be involved in this?
Okay, so this wasn't.
Maybe they might have an idea of why data they've assigned it. Will there be some as part of the implementation piece?
Yeah.
Over and over and over.
And there's, there's stuff out there that we'll use, that were already used.
Yeah.
Which is making weeks. The most people. Instead of the problem. Which I think. Because what we know.
Question.
So we were acting on the survey. Typically, there is something, I mean, almost always there is something, right? Whether it's a diagnosed illness or not, whether.
Kinda more the last. But they. They knew. How about, uh, didn't know enough.
Which comes to all of this.
You know what, and, and then if you don't know what it is you wanna change, how do you know the questions to ask because you don't know what your objective is? So let's just forget all of it. I mean. And, and, and find another way to approach it. So, do you see this as kind of spotty?
Yes, I.
I mean, are you looking at a big overall systems approach? Okay. And he says.
Forty nine point three. We already have an. This is. But what could go?
All the comments that happen. Good. So if, for lack of a better word, what might be the low key zones that you could devise?
They are, yeah.
But, okay. Right, I read the. But I didn't read all the articles.
My husband did that. Stop.
There's always a blip.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So maybe decent.
Shoot for August and be happy if it's later.
Yeah, before the end. But that one, I think, that one too, I started.
But then they know you're real helpful.
Yep. We're already, well, then. I think it's.
Right, and.
And I kind of, my experience around being an attorney about the county, that I saw that all the time too, that, you know, they put people in whatever position.
Yeah, there's some things that are.
Are they, did they reach Rochester, but that was the question.
I mean, I, I do.
If they didn't, they weren't. You know, a lot of the things that they're talking about.
So this is supposed to be like a plan over three years? Do you anticipate not giving it done in that amount of time or less time? I know that's a hard question.
I also feel like to answer. Right me if I'm wrong. I, I. You just read that discussion. That's not a.
I do. I do too, I, I think the harder part is like to be, when you really. Classroom level, and you're looking at developing assessments in real time.
Through the tax. Right, yeah.
I just taught this. I just assessed this, now what do I do with it?
What I, I'm saying everybody else's.
Might take a little bit longer to talk, and a lot of people in a lot of buildings to try to. Make that. And it's all there, it's just not happening. It's consistent as well.
But that might be, you know, sort of a bridge to getting like that. Yeah. Starting with that.
That's a word, I, I mean, we haven't heard that for a while. Here, continuous improvement.
Yeah.
I say it all the time.
I know.
It shows in higher ed, it's part of.
Right. I know. I mean, at the board level.
Sure. I would say that there's always. What is mental health and what is SCL and where do they differ and where are they similar? Cause they are. As a mental health professional, there's always.
Good point.
Are you familiar with Madeline Hunter?
And we.
So Madeline Hunter.
Oh, yeah.
And so you had your, I don't remember what, what.
Anticipatory.
Set, and you went through this stuff and everything else. And for having taught high school orchestra for so many years, it was like, that's how I taught all the time anyways. Yeah, and I remember the.
You do this so well.
I didn't realize, like, this is what I do. I don't, I mean, but it works, it works, but in, in my area of teaching, it was really easy to make that work. Whereas in some other disciplines, I could see it would be a little bit more elusive to. Your eyes just kinda.
I know.
Yes, I'm showing my age.
I remember all that.
Yeah. Some good stuff. Um, we haven't talked much about retention.
It did ring about the first time, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Oh, I. But we're often with.
He should be.
Those are me, sorry. And, and I.
That was so.
And I think, I, I think one of the things that's really, really important is to really.
Have your humanity.
Rather than.
That's what you're gonna do.
Oh, when was the last time you were in the class? You know? And getting some of your really strong teachers together, I mean.
It wasn't.
That's what we were.
Well, she was. She's a talent.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Cause we've got.
That.
No, no.
I did, yep, that was.
Well, you didn't get up or? That's cause we were so engaged. I noticed in the finance one, yeah, right away. So, thanks.
You're a lead.
While they. Money. And after the numbers.
Could be interesting to.
No, they were awesome. Hi, Mark.
She's the only one I didn't ask.
Thanks a lot. Sorry. Twenty twenty. Oh, you got it. I've been. Yeah, I just got, I've been. Getting, getting. Just a big sucker. So I.
But it seemed me yesterday at the grocery store. It was really.
Dash. I would call every morning. What? How do we get that?
Call me at eight thirty.
I mean, I know what day is, but what.
Or what? Or what?
So it's my. English teacher.
I know, yes, I know.
I mean, like, what kind of day did that?
I have two questions that I've been asking each group. And the first one is may, may take a little.
Kind of my theme for most of the tables today has been.
But if you could distill your work down to one or.
What discussions you're. You can have about measurable.
You know, your elevator speech, you have thirty seconds.
What can you tell me about?
What you were doing, changing your, what you got out of it.
What you want to.
Interesting.
Probably from what might use it on different. But I think we did talk about like.
I mean, you know, there's a lot of. Talk about. Um.
In a way. But I don't like getting all those. I don't, I never.
Okay. And so then we know that how much the numbers, and then the next question is.
I mean.
And that one's harder.
The way we needed it.
And. We have. You know, English teacher. Um, what's the, talking about. We should really. Right? We have that in. So I, I know. And we need to have the numbers, but you know, so our graduation, four year graduation. And then we can look at what's our five year graduation rate or six year graduation. Make it so we have a special education, so they can stay in school till they're twenty one, and they should. So, that makes it look not so good. So, the story behind the data, I think, is gonna be reasonably important. And then as soon as you do that, it looks like you're being defensive. Like, you know, the numbers aren't great, but here's why.
In the sense that I'm getting from some of the other groups is that that is, at least in part, kind of part of the next step. Of determining those, the goals and then how to measure that.
I mean, one of the things that just. It kind of broke my heart, but I already knew. When I was reading about comments from STEM. Of color who feel disrespected and ignored and not spoken to well. What lesson is that teaching?
Right. And what do we do next?
How do we make, how do we make that change? How do we? How does that change? Right, I mean, it's.
Tell me more about the six point two, the group intervention. Whatever. And. But unfortunately, it's a little. We do a lot of. Right.
Eighth grade elder.
Is that it?
That's the gateway class.
Is that the gateway?
Yes. So much. No, it's the other way.
That's more language arts.
There, thank you.
I don't remember where it was.
You kinda like the idea of.
And that's a typical, I think, my next question, and I don't know if you have. But how, how, how do you. About when, so they graduate, and do we know in five years, five, eight years? Where they are, what they do, how they're. Where they are, what they do, how they're.
He said, so like you get on the. Yeah, right.
It was like thirty minutes intervention for this group to do that.
He said, I don't talk very much. And I'm thinking about all those.
Does that make sense? Well, and I think it's. Please, I think it's useful that not only does.
It is like this. And we got to the point.
See.
It's out there now.
Really? Because I think that would be interesting. I mean, it may very well be that M C A tests are great predictors.
And I kind of come from the background of. You guys may recognize us either that I don't know. Um, the separation department is a lot of work on that.
No, I, I get that. I mean, that whole design is. Kids take the M C As. And then it used to be, be the passing rate of graduate. And now it's like, take the M C As, they get the score back. And they go to another grade. And nobody ever.
I don't know if that's a partnership that would be helpful.
What did they not learn? There's this kid, it doesn't help this teacher because the grades are.
They may be further along in that process.
But the other thing is, I wonder if kids have gotten to the point where they are so tested out. They just don't care anymore. This test doesn't mean anything to me. I'm gonna do the little pattern. And, or they just choose not to take it and then it counts as. Yeah, we've seen some schools that have had significant numbers of kids under the eighteen kids. Listen, I'm.
Oh, I know.
I'm studying in my group.
You know, I think one of the things that's really going to be helpful is. To use data. Not just.
There's a reason why parents keep that.
Because the kids are gone. You know, they're already gone, so what data can we use?
It's not too late. You go to Sky.
I told him. It's just looking at language that day so casually behind them by name. Or in a class, that's a good. Start with people like. Or whatever the case may be, but then they feel. You know, they, they, they. Have a.
Uh huh.
If we have the data. Why we need to do. So I think there's a lot of.
A lot of. I really appreciate about this. We're not saying.
See, if access.
You know, one of the, one of the terms that I write.
And I really like how they were forgetting about. First of all.
Grade.
Yeah, because it's not. You know, it's a secondly, grades, A B C D.
And, I mean. It's really diminishing the whole course.
Yeah.
Make everything else, but you know, it's one of those.
Well, that's kind of, you know, crazy talk.
And I like the conversation of this.
I think it's so interesting that we decided, was it eighteen thirties or whatever? Or is man was wrong? That if you're six years old, this is the stuff you have to know. Now when you're seven, now when you're five.
People who had done it before. Of all, of all the different. Objectives. All the.
Decent tiles that we use for that. And that research.
No, it's interesting that you just. Not a lot of testing because it used to. And it designed kids in essays. And kids.
Or a.
Of course they do.
Everyone. Adults too.
Um, well, but you know, I.
Whether it be high school or elementary, you might not notice the benefit. You can tell their, where they're long.
I'll be writing with you. Yeah. Here's the stuff. Shouldn't be an autopsy. Um, I'll stop and it was, but they were always kids with taking it fun. So being.
I see twelve points.
I know. Well, not skill test and not the grade levels and it's just when you're ready and it's expensive and it's messy. And it required. And they're really well trained. Well trained and well paid.
I could say, yeah.
And I'm. Oh, my gosh. They have been up there or they've been to the.
So we, we have, this is a lot of gongs in Rochester Public Schools to quiet people at board meetings. Denise's is a little less zen than Michelle's, but. They both work. Um, I feel like Frank Sinatra with this mic here or something. Um, I, we are at time and we have another really important, uh, session. But I want to thank, and I'm sure the board members agree with me, thank all of you who've taken time to come and share the work you did on your working groups. I hope board members feel that you've had a chance to get some of the questions. We took a lot of notes. We'll bake the things that we heard from you into the overview that we'll do on June seventh and into other information that will provide you as you get ready to vote on the plan, June twenty first. And so thank you, everybody. And I think, um, Chair Marvin, if we want to kind of just rotate back to the front of the room for board members and John will be up and.
Eight minute recess.
Eight minute recess, says the chair. So thank you, everybody, so much.
I know my numbers. Thank you so much.
Oh, yeah, I'm a good person. That's right, that's right, good person. Yeah, that's right, I'm better than eating, aren't I?
So to get through today. Are you?
You.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll get to her, I guess. You guys gone home now?
Yeah. We're gonna see her twice this week.
Not as excited.
Oh, right, right, right. I'll say too much.
Hey, Dean. So, if you want us to be out there or if you guys like to sit at the table, I'll just sit at the front table and talk.
Oh, I don't know.
I think we talk about maybe just putting it up square and we can sit out there.
I mean, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What do you mean that?
What am I gonna do? I mean, do we want to go to the others?
I'm sorry, I didn't do the. Oh, that's your family. But it was. It's, uh, it was hard to change gears. Yeah, it was. I had, I had the same two questions. Yeah. Yeah.
And we are reconvening at six twenty-two P M. The next item, the next two items, three point oh two enrollment projections and three point oh three school district budget will be presented by Mr. Carlson, Dr. Pecal.
Thank you, Dr. Marvin and board members. We know that tonight's study session is, of course, not an opportunity for formal action, but it is an opportunity for board members to review information and dialogue in preparation for your action on the budget for the upcoming school year that is planned as an item on the June seventh regular board meeting. And so tonight is part of our process of preparing for that important discussion. We are converging two items into one presentation and one discussion because they are intimately related, and that is the budget proposal for next year and our enrollment projection, which, as John will now describe, has been recently completed. And so I want to begin by thanking John for his leadership of what has been an incredibly challenging, I think ultimately quite effective process. I remember in January, as we were receiving feedback on the budget reduction proposal, there was a point where John said, I don't know how we're going to get this done and do it effectively and engage the community and all of the things that we wanted to do and that board members expected us to do. Reductions are never easy, but I think we have a solid proposal for you to consider in June when we review the budget in a regular meeting. So, John, we know you're going to give us a fairly robust presentation here now that gets into both the enrollment projections and then this very detailed budget book that we've got, and then we'll open it up for board member questions and comments.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Pecal and Chair Marvin. And I just want to thank the superintendent for all the work you did in January, February, and helping me bring it all together. Your leadership on the community engagement piece was really important and helpful to me where I was struggling a little bit. So we got it done. We even documented how we responded to that in the end of the budget book. I'm actually going to start with the budget book, and then we'll get into enrollment projections in just a couple pages here. I'll just kind of intertwine them together. So I'm going to start on the budget book in the very opening on the highlight page. It doesn't have a page number on it. And just walk through a couple of the highlights. So the general fund budget is four point two percent higher than this year's original starting budget. It includes new positions for opening of the new school buildings, and it has some reductions in current school building staffing. This is year one of a three-year kind of roadmap that does a combination of multiple things, such as using the federal COVID- nineteen funding, eliminating some positions, delaying transfers into savings. And basically, we've been able to bring down in this budget proposal that we're going to talk about the deficit from twenty-three million dollars to four point three million dollars, to the exact level that we said it would be if we implemented year one of the roadmap. There was a lot of hard work and a lot of decision-making that went into that, and we thank you for your involvement too back in January, February, to get some of the preliminary decisions. The unassigned fund balance, if we implement this budget and if we ended this year at ten point three percent, would be at nine point four percent. And I know we've talked about that number. Should current board policy be increased from six to a higher number? We haven't officially made a decision or acted upon that yet, but it would comply likely with either direction you go on potential policy there. Our food service budget, just highlighting that if you were to look at that, we won't spend a lot of time on food service, but you are going to notice some larger-than-normal percentage increases. Part of that is due to, you know, opening up the new schools and having more staffing that's required. But part of it is accounting for expected cost increases on food and milk and other materials going up about eight percent next year. And then in building construction, when we get to that fund, again, we won't spend a ton of time on it, but what we're asking to approve in the original budget is an amount sufficient to at least start our summer projects. And then we'll revise that later and bring you any unspent portions of construction funds from the referendum. All right, I'm going to jump ahead then to page eight. So you can skip over a couple letters there from the superintendent and from myself, just kind of explaining some of the background. But on page eight, we talk about the budget timeline. I just want to highlight some of the key decision points where the board has already acted or where the staff has already acted on your behalf to get things going. But starting this budget goes all the way back to July twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-one. So at this point, we're nearly ten months into working on the two thousand and twenty-two dash two thousand and twenty-three budget. We started by submitting some of our preliminary data to M D E so it could become included on the levy. You looked at the levy as early as, I think it was mid-September, but we asked you to approve a preliminary levy on October fifth. And then you approved the levy on December seventh. And so that levy that you approved back in December seventh forms the basis of about twenty percent of our revenue for next school year. There were some additional steps, and I wish I would have noted this because they are a little bit unusual, but on, for example, on February eighth, the school board voted to approve our recommended roadmap where we were going to implement some cost shifts and some budget reductions, and we'll talk about those a little bit more in detail later. What's interesting, of course, we're at May seventeenth right now, and the very bottom thing on page eight says May twenty-third is when the last day of the legislature is scheduled to conclude. I've seen just as recent as about four P M. this afternoon, they were talking, they're exchanging offers yet on what proposals they might entertain for increased education funding for next year and then the next couple of years after that. In the most recent offer that went back and forth, it looks like the Senate prioritized something that's very near and dear to our hearts, which is the Special Education Cross Subsidy. And they basically put all of the new funding into that bucket, which would go a long way in solving some of our problems in the structure of our budget. So I'm crossing my fingers and hoping that the two sides can come to agreement. They have about five days left to do that, and so hopefully there'll be a bill that makes sense that everyone can vote to approve of that. Moving into page nine, you will get a chance to officially, we will ask for your approval on June twenty-first of this budget, but it doesn't end there. As we move through the calendar year of two thousand and twenty-two and then to two thousand and twenty-three, you see there's still more steps that we'll take on this budget document. They're walking through and looking at monthly reports and approving budget revisions and becoming audited after it's all said and done. So this isn't the last you're going to hear about the two thousand and twenty-three budget. All right, let's head to page ten in the budget book. This is where I'm going to kind of shift into enrollment projections because enrollment projections falls on this page here. So if you look to the screens, for enrollment projections this year, we decided to go out and have an external provider work with us on the enrollment projections. We've had models that we've worked with in our department that have been around for a lot of years, but we wanted an external set of eyes, somebody that could come in and objectively look at our data and kind of test it against what we were doing. And so we selected cooperative strategies, and they came in here. They are not unfamiliar to us. Cooperative Strategies did work with us in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and twenty-one on referendum issues and then on boundary changes. We've had a very good relationship with them. They developed four models upon looking at our data. And really what they landed on and recommended to us is, let's look back, let's use the five-year average of the cohort survival rates, and let's implement that going forward along with the live birth statistics that we were able to pull jointly from the state of Minnesota for Olmsted County and Rochester specifically. And so when they did that, just one step back before I get to the recommended model. So we were on a trend. We were seventeen thousand nine thirty-two students five years ago. We bumped up, we bumped up again. Then the pandemic, the fall of the first year of the pandemic, we dropped about six hundred and sixty-one students. We did recover, we went up a little bit. But as I was saying, or starting to say with cooperative strategies, what they did is they kind of took all that data from that, for those five years of history there, and they put it into a model and said, if this kind of general trends continue with the birth rates being what they are and the general direction of your student, what's happened over the last five years, we unfortunately are predicting that your enrollment will start down a path of declining enrollment, which is a little bit of a shock to a lot of people internally and probably externally, because prior to the pandemic, we were on this one hundred, two hundred kids up, 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 up every year, and it didn't, it really didn't have any end in sight. It was going to be beyond nineteen thousand kids in a few years. And now we're saying we're probably going to, at best case, stay flat or go up a little bit, but likely start dropping a little bit unless some of the data is just not correct and people do choose to come back to the system. I feel like maybe you were maybe going to ask a question, but maybe you're just moving your microphone. Okay. So here's kind of what I was trying to say about the birth data. It's been very flat. Twelve, thirteen years ago, it was just over two thousand babies were born in our zip codes that cover our school district, and that's been heading down. It's not quite to fifteen hundred, but it's definitely lower than two thousand. And that trend you can kind of see is just gradually getting less and less. Now, during that whole time, we've been growing as a school district. So what that's telling us through the data there is that people are continuing to move into town, and we're getting kids in our district that weren't necessarily born here, which is a good thing. What we don't know is, is that going to continue? There's, there's been conversations around, are there as many people moving here? Are more people taking jobs here, but yet they're staying where they were living before they took a job here, they're just working remotely in Rochester? So it's kind of hard to tell right now where we're going to be going in the next few years. But if we put all that data and we start breaking it out by the different levels, the elementary is probably where the biggest concern is because with most of our withdrawals in the fall of two thousand and twenty being at the elementary level, and then on top of that compounding, you've got less babies being born. And then subjectively, we don't know yet if people are going to continue moving here as much as they are. It kind of just looks like the numbers are going to drop, 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 drop. And then that's going to feed its way into middle school a few years later, or probably be less middle school kids if those trends continued. But what we haven't quite seen yet is it will take a few years before high school. We're not probably even at our peak enrollment for high school. Because of the kids that we do have, we expect they will keep pushing through the system, and it'd be a few more years before the high schools might peak and then start on a small One of the factors that we're watching very closely is open enrollment. Open enrollment is state law that allows you to go to a different school, public school district than the one you live in. And we've also been noticing that that trend has kind of just been going up, 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 up. Now, prior to the pandemic, there were also the number of kids coming into our district who didn't live here, but their parents drove them into our district was going up, up, up. But then that also took a little bit of a reset there in the fall of two thousand and twenty. So that gap has kind of been going up year over year, and that's been the concerning part. How do we at least make that flat, or how do we keep that from increasing? And I know just to stepping back to our strategic planning discussion, that was kind of what our group worked a lot on, is how do we, how do we make Rochester the first choice, especially for the people that live here? We'd love to have other kids from other districts come in and choose us as a great option for them, but for sure, we want to keep the kids that live here and make them see that we should be the first choice for them. So the main points of our enrollment projections, that is the basis of was we keep kind of walking through our budget book. It is the basis for how we built the budget because that drives the revenue, and then we pick the number of staff based on that. Prior to the pandemic, birth numbers were going down, but enrollment was going up, meaning students born here, not born here, are moving into the district. And like I said, during the pandemic, most of the student loss happened at the elementary level. And so what we don't know, what we have not accounted for in any of these projections is, should those parents become dissatisfied with the option that they chose temporarily or maybe for a couple of years, will they eventually come back? We have not factored any of that in there. That would kind of be in the four models in the high range. So if, if people started flocking back to us, then we'd probably be on that upper end or that higher growth chart that actually shows us going the other way, that we're actually back to that pattern of growing a couple hundred kids a year. But we just don't know how to plan for that. We didn't see six hundred kids who left in the fall of two thousand and twenty come back in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one. So I think it'd be not prudent to just throw that in there and say, well, by the fall of two thousand and twenty-four, we expect they'll all be back. We just don't know. And then prior to the referendum, our schools were at ninety-nine percent capacity on average at the elementary level, and that range is low as eighty-two percent at the Churchill-Hover combined or a hundred and twelve percent at Elton Hills. The referendum of two thousand and nineteen was about adding space and bringing our capacity to somewhere eighty percent, eighty-five, ninety, somewhere under a hundred, so that we didn't have to go out and build right away again, as well as we had room for fluctuations year to year in neighborhoods or where people chose to live. So the other thing that started last fall that's not even, wasn't on our radar three years ago, was starting in an online elementary school that has a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty kids enrolled in it. And so those kids would have been in a physical building, but now are not in a physical building. They're in the online option. So that also is kind of impacting our physical capacity. So we're projecting that we're going to be somewhere seventy-three to seventy-seven percent on average at our elementary schools this fall. So we're not going to be drastically off the eighty percent that we thought would be comfortable, would be allowing still for room for growth, but we are going to probably be under just a little bit from where we said we would be in two thousand and nineteen. A year ago, when we did enrollment projections, we said, come fall of two thousand and twenty-one, we'll have seventeen thousand seven forty-three. We actually had seventeen thousand eight hundred. So we beat the enrollment projection. That very well could be hap, that could happen again. So what we've, we've, we've landed on the recommended number that Cooperative Strategies came up with at seventeen six forty-two. I just want to put it out there that it could be a range anywhere from seventeen thousand to seventy-two, as high as eighteen thousand one twenty-nine, depending on where we actually land within the four likely models. So seventeen six forty-two is kind of just right in the middle of the, of the four. Back to our budget book, if we're going to keep moving on, I wanted to stop on page eleven.
Mr. Carlson, would you take a question?
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
So this is, this is just sort of reflective, more than a specific question, but more of a, let's start wrapping our minds around the concept of declining enrollment, because that hasn't been a mindset that Rochester Public Schools has been in.
Correct.
And when I joined the board, I remember hearing from other school board members and from MSBA at our training that, you know, oh, heaven forbid you ever be in a declining enrollment position because it's very painful to have to close schools and lay people off. And that's like this, this total horrible situation to envision being a school board member. But as, as, so initially, when I opened this report, I was like, oh, no, we're in the worst-case scenario, the nightmare scenario. But it occurs to me that, you know, it, it doesn't have to be that bad of a thing if we're ready for it and we react to it. Because if we want our buildings to be, you know, at or above eighty percent capacity and we're not there, there are things that we can adjust. We can, you know, look at some of our school buildings and consolidate students and find, like what we're doing for Fred L., looking at other programs that can be put in those buildings. And is that, in your mind, a way for us to control costs and address any difficulties that would be presented to us by declining enrollment as a long-term challenge?
I, I may call on the superintendent to jump in here and just give his thoughts ahead of my thoughts and what he might think, but, because I think it's maybe a little premature to start speculating that, okay, we could consolidate schools or close schools. I know we, we may have touched on that a little bit, but I think a lot more conversation, a lot more thought needs to go into that before we.
Sure.
Put something out there. Yep, that's what we're doing.
It would be part of our, our budget reduction process, no doubt. But I guess, I guess I'm being a little bit more reflective on declining enrollment as a challenge that school districts have to face. And since it's something that we in Rochester haven't been facing, it might be a new concept to those of us who are coming up to it for the first time. And I, I guess I'm looking for a little context for those people on how districts generally deal with it and whether it is a nightmare scenario or is something that districts just adapt to and cope with. Lots of districts are in a declining enrollment phase, so.
Yeah, deep, deep questions, Director Amundson, and I, I thank you for raising There's a difference between declining enrollment and a downward spiral.
Yes.
And there are tipping points where you do have that. Even the worst-case scenario here is not a downward spiral.
Right.
And it's really important to amplify what John said. The cohort-based methodology that, that is the state of the art is highly problematic when it incorporates the reactions to a global pandemic.
Yep.
Now, there's not a better methodology for us to use, and I'm a, I'm a financial conservative in this sense. I want us to budget for the possible, you know, least desirable scenario. In terms of managing for that downward trajectory, if in fact, if that does happen, because I will say, you know, we're up a bit this year, and that's encouraging because this year is this year. It's not, you know, it, that is a very recent hard data point that we are, we are not headed down there yet. Should that happen, I think what you do is you look for efficiencies both within schools and across schools. Within schools, as you begin to think creatively about, can we have different class sizes, different class configurations? Can we have community partners in schools? You use your space differently within them. And yes, across schools, you look and you say, do we have some facilities that are not as great places for kids to learn as some of our new facilities? And sometimes you get rid of them, and other times you put them to different purposes. And so those are the kinds of things that I think a district in this scenario can put in place. I would say we need to have Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C.
Absolutely.
So that it responds to all of these possibilities in a really clear, important way. And we need to be very aggressive about addressing the challenges we have in our system and then building on our strengths so that, as John said, we are the provider of choice, and we need to do it. There are communities in which there just aren't kids. We have kids in Rochester. We have folks and families that we can appeal to. I've worked in communities across the country, like in rural Oregon, where there just aren't kids. There's no one they can actually convince to come to their schools or work harder to retain in their schools. That's not our condition. And so we have that really important opportunity, and I appreciate the sort of urge to think ahead to this. I think in the districts, and I've been connected to some of them, where that downward spiral kicks in, there are many factors that cause that. But I do believe leadership, starting at the board level, that begins to face that possibility early and clearly and work hard to address it, is a decisive factor. If you ignore it and you don't make some of those decisions, that's where the quality of education you can provide in each school becomes so low that you have downward enrollment that is a demographic function accelerated by people saying, my kid's not getting the education they want in the school, and then you have people making very different choices. So all, all things for us to be really clear-eyed about looking forward.
But, but you addressed, you addressed exactly the question mark that was in my mind, which was, if we're looking at declining births in Olmsted County, then, you know, as you said, we do have the students here, but there's going to be a slightly smaller pool each year if, if birth rates continue to decline. But that doesn't have to be the end of the world as long as we're on top of it. I'm wondering, you know, perhaps it would be a conversation for the board to have in the future to set a target for building capacity, like we set a target for, you know, how much, what percentage to have in the reserve. Maybe we, we have a, a guideline, you know, not that we pick, but that, that we approve that says, when we reach this capacity for, you know, two years running, it's time to start implementing the next phase of the plan. But I have every confidence that.
One of the things, if I can interrupt, one of the things that Cooperative Strategies, as they were talking, as I was talking to them yesterday, getting ready for this meeting tonight, was just on, you know, class size limits. So for class size targets, we, we use twenty-nine for second grade, third grade, thirty-one for fourth grade, fifth grade, which they said is on the high end from what they see across the country. You know, if you think of a fourteen-classroom school, and we were talking about this during strategic planning, if all of our classes were capped at twenty, we'll start off, we'd need eighty-five more teachers across the district to do that. But our capacity actually goes down then in our buildings because we, we now have to say, a fourteen-room school can only hold two hundred and eighty kids, where we're putting three hundred and sixty in today. So it's, it, it may sort itself out if we actually va, wanted to put more money towards lowering class sizes, that we've actually got the footprint that we need to do that.
And that would be making lemonade.
Which we didn't have four years ago.
That would be making lemonade out of lemons. That would actually put us in a better position all around.
Then all of a sudden, you start to be, people start talking about, Rochester only runs twenty kids in elementary school. That's, actually, that's favorable feather in our act kind of a situation.
And then, and then we've got a lemonade business in Rochester. And then we've got a lemonade business in Rochester.
And I know that the birth rate is one of the driving factors in this, but you also mentioned that our enrollment's also driven by people moving to town, not necessarily born here. And I know in some of the questions and answers, there was questions about Rochester as a whole and the economic development that brings people to town. You mentioned it in your introduction about not knowing, does that mean people who are working for Rochester companies but maybe physically not being here? But, and I don't have all the numbers in front of me, but a number, there were some numbers in the report from Cooperative Strategies that talked about overall, because of the housing permits that are being built, there's a projection of more potential students in Olmsted County that's sort of beyond the birth rate.
That's right.
And there was also a data point about students who have been identified as school age, but they're not identified as enrolled in school-
Right.
-in the census data. So they're not big pockets, but the, I haven't done a total, but, you know, when we're talking about, I asked Mr. Carlson, how many more students would we need to get capacity to a level? And it was seven hundred and eighteen. So we're not talking about negative numbers of a pool that we can go after. There are seven hundred and eighteen students out there that we could convince to enroll back in Rochester. Public schools are open and enrolled, that we could capture as their homes are built and they're moving in. So I think that's an important component to realize, is that we're not, it's not a zero-sum situation. We're not looking at zero being our number of students to work with. We still have a population that could fill some of those enrollment numbers that we've dropped out.
And that's Plan A.
Right.
If we're talking about Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, we're not looking at closing buildings until we've exhausted Plan A and Plan B. But it's just nice to know that this isn't a, oh, no, the sky is falling situation. We just right-size. We look at the capacity that we've got, we look at the staff that we've got, and we make the most efficient choices necessary for the population that we have at any given time. And it doesn't need to be a bad news scenario, just not our first choice.
And I've read about other districts that have been in true declining enrollment where it's maybe spiraling. It's, they're talking about kids, there are schools that have one hundred and eighty-eight kids or something, and it's just, it's not efficient, and they need to deal with that. There's a lot of pressures from a lot of different angles that are preventing that consolidation or that from happening. We're not at that point, I don't think, where we need to act immediately to close a building to make things right.
So would you see this method of calculating enrollment projections as something that we want to continue outsourcing, or was this a one-time check-in on are we doing this well?
Very good question, because I've been wrestling with that myself. I for sure wanted to do it at least one time to kind of validate. I do appreciate all the effort they put into it and looking at a lot of different angles, but at the end of the day, the methodology is probably one that we can recreate and one that we can use and we can do, or, you know, continue doing the way we have done in the past. So I'm on the fence either whether I'm going to ask them to refresh it annually or if we're going to take it now and tweak it and work with it ourselves.
Okay.
All right, back to the budget book then. Page eleven. This is kind of, I really like this, the snapshot page. I did notice here at the top, we say the district serves a population of one hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred, and I noticed when we were talking strategic planning, that one's at one hundred and twenty-eight thousand and change. I think the strategic planning one was using from the last census or from just a little while back, because this number is the updated number, I think, from the 2020 census. But we've, I just wanted to point out on the staff, we have thirty-one hundred employees. That's roughly thirty-one hundred people get a paycheck on every payday. That equates to two thousand six hundred fifty-four full-time equivalent positions. So there's plenty of positions in there that are not a hundred percent or a full-time job. All right, I'll flip over to page twelve. Just a couple of highlights I wanted to note on property taxes. Of our levy or our annual property taxes, thirty-nine percent of that total is voter-approved, and the other sixty-one percent are different statutes, different laws, different rules that the board can act on without having to go to the voters. I think that sometimes causes a little bit of confusion around truth and taxation time. I get usually one or two calls a year about what are all these other levies, because that's how they get put on the tax statement. But those are just the things like the unemployment levy or the community ed levy or those things that we don't have to go to the voters and ask for, but yet they're capped by law. You can't just put down like the city and county, whatever dollar amount you would like to fill in the blank on that, so. Just as far a note on the school taxes payable on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, I think at some point here we need to increase that value and go with like a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home to be a little more relevant. But we're trying to show there more is the taxing rate, and our taxing rate, you know, has bumped up a couple of different times right after we've passed the referendum, and then it starts declining as the tax base in Rochester has continued to grow. And that's a good thing. That means that the actual percentage of taxes charged to a home has been relatively flat to declining at times. All right, page thirteen. This graph just tries to take and show the proposed budget based on the major funds that we track, and the general fund is at two hundred and fifty-six million, so it's sixty-six percent of the proposed spending for next year. I just want to note that when we did the December forecast, the five-year forecast, we had projected that the general fund budget was going to grow to two hundred and sixty-five million this year. So if we did not make any changes, we just let everything run, the same staff, the same programs, everything the same as it was, it would have been two sixty-five. So we were able to get it down to two fifty-six through the seven million dollars of budget reductions and cost shifts and shuffles and things that we did, the leases that we canceled. That's how we brought it down to two fifty-six for the budget next year. I'm going to flip over to page fifteen and just highlight a couple of numbers on this page. The number for state aids and credits, you can see in the blue graph there, one hundred and ninety million dollars is what our revenue is projected to be from the state of Minnesota. That represents seventy-five percent of our annual revenue, and then our property taxes is forty-two million dollars, so about sixteen percent of the revenue. So between those two sources, that accounts for, what, ninety-one percent of our revenue. On page sixteen, just want to highlight that rather than put dollars this year, we just decided to put percents so that you can see by the programmatic areas of our budget, the percentages to see relatively how consistent they are. Student instruction has been declining. Part of that is the way we've changed some of our coding in the system. We have a little bit of flexibility on paraprofessionals, for example. Are they instructional or are they pupil supports? And we've gone back and forth. This year, we tried to land on pupil support if they were not in the classroom. And so, but if you add those two categories up, they've been right in that eighty-two-point-five to eighty-three-point-two percent range for the last five years. We keep our admin costs very consistent. In fact, it's been declining at administrations as a percentage of the budget continues to go down. Our district support services go down a little bit. Our sites and buildings have been very flat, and the other category's been very flat, too. So I feel like in terms of how we're allocating the budget, we're not trying to get rid of this segment of the budget in favor of the other segment of the budget. We've been keeping it all very consistent year over year for the last five years. On page seventeen, it just takes those kind of five or six main areas and then gives a little bit more breakout, the programmatic areas within those main programs. The only thing I was going to highlight on this is other student support. It's in the second kind of color section there. That's kind of a catch-all for anything that's not specifically described. But one thing I noticed that was missing was school security is now a major program. And so next year, I'm going to break that out, because it's over one million dollars that we're spending on school security types of services, and so I want to make sure that that kind of gets highlighted as its own line there. So that would come out of the other student support numbers. Flip over to page eighteen. This talks about the general fund expenditures. Between salaries and benefits, it's very consistent. Again, it's eighty-two percent of the proposed budget. It's usually been right in that eighty, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one percent. This year popped up a little bit to eighty-two. Under purchased services, so these are things that we have to buy where it's not our own employees doing the things or the work. So of the thirty-five-point-one million dollars there, basically almost half of it is spent on school bus services. So between first student, kids on the go, those types of services, sixteen million dollars. And then our utilities is also a purchase service, so natural gas, electricity, four-point-nine Over to page nineteen. What I would highlight here is something that I said earlier and something that Director Nathan was asking, I think, over the weekend, just about school board class size targets. I don't, to my knowledge, remember us having a discussion on that. It's not specific board policy. At the secondary level, so seventh or secondary level, seventh through twelfth grade, our teachers in their teacher contract can't see more than a hundred and sixty students a day, and they generally teach five periods a day. So in a roundabout way, the class size limit at secondary is thirty-two kids per section, but it fluctuates a little bit. But our elementary level, as I was saying before, if we were to do something crazy, like drop it all to twenty kids, no more than twenty, just quick back-of-the-napkin math showed we'd need another eighty-five teachers in the school district. So just for some context there. Our actual average class sizes usually come in lower. That's why the class size target can be misleading. That's usually the cap. We try not to run anything greater than that. We will sometimes if we have to, if we're, just doesn't seem like we have even another room to put another teacher and split out some more kids. We sometimes go just a little bit over class size target, but generally you can see in the averages that we, you know, look at fifth grade, the target is thirty-one, but the average class is going to be twenty-five. So we're not pushing right up to the thirty-one on average. Now, you're going to hear for a pocket here or there, you're going to hear somebody say, I have thirty-two fifth graders in my room. That might happen from time to time, but there's going to be another room then that's somewhere that has twenty fifth graders in it. So you have to kind of weigh that noise. On page twenty, I just wanted to highlight, so this is our listing of FTEs by contract group, so school board down to maintenance, totals up to two thousand six hundred fifty-three-point-nine FTE in the proposed budget. What this does not reflect, though, is the superintendent shift in central administrative positions. And so that was just announced last Friday. This was all prepared a couple of weeks ago and published, and so we did not have time to catch that and get that reflected in here. So we're going to do that on the fall budget revision that we bring you in November. But just for some context, it would show that we're reducing two FTE and about three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars of general fund spending. I guess the reason I didn't scramble to republish this is that if you're thinking materiality, it's about point one-four percent of the general fund budget. So I didn't want to spend a lot of staff time reworking a lot of pages, because it's not just one page that is all linked together, and there's a lot of different things that feed off each other to make that kind of correction. So we'll catch that later, if you're okay with that. On page twenty-one, the, this graph we've put in the book here for the last couple of years, but we're just talking about when the law changed back in two thousand and one that put most of the funding responsibility away from local property taxpayers to the state of Minnesota. The state of Minnesota now controls what districts are funded. And this green line just shows what the actual funding formula, how it has changed over time since that two thousand and one decision. The red line puts the Consumer Price Index, though, and says if the thing had just kept up with the CPI, it would be on this red line. That gap now is nine hundred and twenty-six dollars per pupil unit below inflation. So actually, even though the dollars coming in are higher, the actual purchasing power we have has gotten lower. But that gap for our districts is about seventeen and a half million dollars a year. So if you're thinking, just in context of a twenty-three-million-dollar deficit, seventeen and a half million dollars could be attributed to that line, not going up at the rate of inflation.
And this is my favorite graph, as everybody knows. I tell people about it all the time, but there are other ways of calculating the true costs of what a school district incurs, and CPI isn't even necessarily arguably the best way to calculate it. The implicit price deflator would make that gap even larger because it focuses more on personnel costs, which is what the majority of our budget is.
That's right.
So this is not exaggerating the concerns at all. This is actually perhaps understating-
Understanding, I agree with that. This is probably looking at what the price of tomatoes and toilet paper and gasoline is, but not necessarily what it costs to pay a teacher, so.
I should get this and wear it on a T-shirt, because this is my answer to everybody who says, how did we get ourselves in a budget deficit? Look at that graph.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you for including it.
On to page twenty-two. I put in a frequently asked question. I think we had this last year, just talking about the federal COVID-19 funding, the forty-point-six million dollars of one-time money, although we're not spending it all in one chunk, nor did we get it all in one chunk. So what happens is we have to spend the money first, and then we have to apply for reimbursement. We're authorized to spend up to forty-point-six million dollars, but we have to spend our own money and then ask for the money back later. And so we've been working our way through that. We've been spreading it out, too. We realized that this is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to help supplement the budget at a rate that we hadn't seen before. And so we're trying to spread it out, maximize it. We're trying to use it towards the expenses that we absolutely have to do. We're also using it partially to offset some of the costs that we didn't know how to fund or we might have otherwise had to cut from our spending this year and next year. And so I've just put together a chart, too, to be slightly more transparent. On the next page, it just shows each of the different buckets that the three different congressional acts, how they broke it down and what they were called. It doesn't give you a lot of detail here on what you can use them, because a lot of them have specific things that you could use and that you could not use them for. So we maintain that detail and understand what we can. But you can kind of just see where we're at. This was run as of May second, just to give you perspective as to what has been spent and what has not been spent. But as of May second, we had spent fifteen million of the forty million. So we're not even halfway through that yet. I will just point out, too, it's my intent or intention to give a presentation probably to the school board when the superintendent or the chair would like to have more information brought forward, because we have a lot more detail that we can provide as to how did we spend it, what was it spent on, and so forth. All right, to page twenty-four. The only thing I'll point out here is, this is a listing of all the debts, all the different borrowings we have, what the balance started at, what the balance is as of today. On the 2020A line, which is the new schools that are under construction, it's just kind of an interesting fact that we've already paid those down to one hundred and fifty-nine million dollars. So we're continuing to make our annual payments on that. I mean, that's equivalent to almost having like one of the schools is already paid off, and we haven't even opened them all yet, so. Reserve funds on page twenty-five, we just kind of did a comparison. We've included this before, but wanted to say, do we have too much of our expenses in reserve? Sometimes we've heard that, that you, we sit on too much reserve money. Now, this is looking at unassigned plus restricted plus assigned, because that's the best data comparison point that we could get to is comparing it across all of those reserves. We're at nineteen-point-seven percent. Our peer group is twenty-point-one percent. We're basically right on the average there. We're right in the middle. We're right at the average line. So I would say from that perspective, it would seem, it would appear that we've got a reasonable amount of fund balance sitting aside. Onto page twenty-six. This one just talks about money raised locally through a voter-approved operating referendum. Again, you can see that we are the lowest at eight hundred and thirty-seven of our peer group. If we were at the average, so if you took all the way from Minnetonka to Rochester and averaged it, we would be looking at fourteen-point-seven million dollars of additional revenue. Now, we had some great discussion at the tables during strategic planning about, that sounds great, that sounds easy, why not just go out and do it? But it takes a lot of work to pass a referendum, and we need a clear and compelling case to do that. And so I look forward to participating in future- And so I look forward to participating in future referendum efforts to do that. Onto the next page. We kind of already hit on this, I won't spend too much time on this, but this is the open enrollment, a chart again, just trying to document that the, the trend has not been favorable in our direction, that the number of kids leaving us to go to another local school district has been going up, 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 and that we currently have a gap of about two thousand and nine. This is open enrollment and kids leaving for charter schools, which I consider to be like open enrollment. It's not technically under the open enrollment statute, but to me, it's kids who have left our public school district to go to another public school that the state is paying for. So that's why that number mismatches just a little bit to the enrollment projection. I did want to comment, I guess, if these students, if these two thousand three hundred and thirty-seven students went here, it'd be twenty-two point seven million dollars in additional revenue. However, there would be extra cost for that because we would need more teachers, more paras, et cetera. We estimated very, very quickly that it'd be about fifteen million dollars more of direct expense to serve those students. So, but that does show that there is some margin there that can be used to offset transportation costs, utilities, administration, and so on and so forth. Page twenty-eight, we talk about cross subsidy. This is new in the budget book this year. Just wanted to point out, now, I think these are from nineteen twenty, and they're, the twenty dash twenty-one numbers were just recently come out, and they're higher than this, but fifteen point six million dollars was the special ed and three point three million dollars was the English learner. I think this is where I wanted to just say, if you've been keeping track now, inflation at seventeen and a half million dollars, peer average referendum of fourteen point seven million, special ed cross subsidy, if that was actually funded and taken care of, fifteen point six million, EL cross subsidy of three point three million, that's a potential of fifty-one point one million dollars more revenue we could or should, however you want to look at it, could be receiving compared to our twenty-three million dollar deficit. We would, we would be sitting here saying, "What should we do with that extra funding?" We would not be sitting here looking at a budget cutting situation perpetually. So part of it is through our own decisions and how we've chosen to, to spend our money, but part of it is clearly can be tied back to things like inflation and special ed mandated services and, and then the, the state government not following through and paying for those. Page twenty-nine is a new chart that we've put in here. The superintendent and I have had a lot of discussions on this, like, how did we get to this point of a budget that's not structurally balanced? Why are we always seeming to cut? Part of it is because of under the, the revenue not keeping up. Part of it, again, is some of our own decisions and how we've grown staffing over the last ten to twelve years at a rate that is significantly higher, four times higher than the number of students that we've been getting in. And so I think I had shown it in actual numbers where we've added thirteen hundred students, but we've added six hundred and fifty full-time. So we've added almost one adult for every two new students, and that's just not a sustainable track to be on. This is very nuanced. There's a lot of reasons for that. There's a lot of good reasons for that. But it's, at some point, and this will probably start happening in the fall as we bring together the next round of ideas for budget cutting or deficit reductions, we're going to have to start addressing and figuring out what are the things in there, though, that maybe we could do without or that we're going to have to do without, at least on a short-term basis, to bring the, the budget back into structural balance.
I do want to add before we move on, just, I think the board should look and feel some accomplishment in the blue line for FY twenty-two to FY twenty-three, because that is the decisions that you have authorized and are going to vote on in June, right there in graphic form. And so what was a fairly unchecked upward trajectory, with the exception of FY seventeen to eighteen, it has been a significant shift in that, and that hasn't been easy. And so we need to continue to do it in the interest of kids and in the most humane way we can. But we should feel good about that.
And then the last frequently asked question that we have there on page thirty deals with the, the budget cutting, the deficit. How did you get here? Or how did, what decisions did you implement to get to this proposed budget? And I'll just point out that Appendix Nine, which I'll touch on briefly here in a couple minutes, but on page one thirty-one really dives into the details of, of the process that we went through, the feedback that we got, how we responded to that feedback, how that all informed our decision-making, our thoughts into bringing forward this proposed budget. And then the final, I guess the final, final frequently asked question there is, what's going to happen in twenty-three dash twenty-four? And tried to provide some context into some of the decisions to get to another seven million dollars of reductions. Probably means, unless we find some other creative ways, but probably means another eighty-five FTE somewhere needs to be dealt with. Now, should there be good news out of the state of Minnesota, and there's new funding that we don't have accounted for or don't know about, that could quickly reverse that? So I need to hold that number loosely at this point until we know more. Then we walk through a variety of different appendices, and I, I don't want to spend, you know, four more hours walking through line by line, chart by chart, graph by graph. So I kind of maybe just want to tell you what they are. We can pause and see if there were any specific questions on them, and then we can move into more questioning, I guess. So the first one is on FTEs, and what we try to do is we try to compare the, what was in the budget book last year compared to what is in the staffing budget this year. And so we just go like contract by contract. We start with school board, superintendent, cabinet, principal, administration, adult literacy teachers, elementary ed teachers, so on and so forth, all the way through all the jobs, all the job titles we have, to just show comparisons as to where staff, staffing might be increasing and in cases where staffing might be decreasing. Maybe I'll pause there and just see, did anything jump out at you that you wanted to ask further about in Appendix One?
I just wanted to comment, Mr. Carlson, I know this is available online.
Yes.
This is so thorough and so transparent. I mean, the amount of time and specificity in here.
Well, believe me, it's specific. We've had conversations about point ones on this.
Yeah, I was going to say, so, yeah, thank you for that.
And, and I would say transparent, like, I don't know if I can find another budget book produced that goes into every position line by line, how many exact FTE are included in the budget.
And every board member has spent hours reading it and has most of it memorized. So.
I will expect you to start the reservation.
Exactly, exactly.
Chair Marvin.
Yes.
I ask you this question every year, Ms. Carlson, but when I look at these net changes that are decreasing in FTEs, I ask, does this mean anyone is losing their job with the district?
Right. So to the best of my knowledge, I know of nobody that's going to be on unrequested leave of absence or a laid off. Now, I was informed today, there are a couple teaching situations where there might be underemployment, where maybe they had a point-six job, but we can only get them up to a point four right now. Now, something could change over the summer, some reconfigurations could happen, somebody else might resign, retire, that hasn't already told us that, and then, then that all shifts and everything just works out. But there are a couple cases where there might be an underemployment as of today. But for the most part, most people that are employed today are going to have a job. It might be a different job at a different building, but they are going to have a job next year.
Thank you.
Appendix Two, that starts on page forty-five. We just take all that FTE data, we make it really small so that you can't see what it says, and then we go to Appendix Three. But what we're trying to show here is, is really, how does it all break out building by building? So if you really want to sit and look and see how many whatever at Sentry compared to John Marshall, you can see, huh, they're actually staffed about exactly the same. There's a hundred and fifty-nine point zero FTE at Sentry and a hundred and fifty-nine point five at John Marshall. The difference could be basically a few different, you know, number of kids. It could be the amount of compensatory that one principal had over the other and was able to make a couple different decisions. But most of, of these, you can easily see how we compare, and it, and it makes sense based on all the, the formulas that we have.
Chair Marvin.
Yes.
And so the changes that we would see, building by building, are because of how our staffing model reflects the changes that happen in the building, either by student population or specific student needs in the case of special education, IEPs, et cetera.
That's exactly right. We, we have a pretty specific process that we run from mid-February to mid-March, was building by building, job by job title, and we, and we lay it all out. There's formulas that we fi, follow, and then we hear from the special ed department on, on the specific needs of, of that building, and, and all that gets slotted in there.
Oh, sorry, Julie.
Yeah, I think, I think it's good to remind people, too, that some of what drives this is what students elect to take in high school. So, I mean, they have required courses. They can't really say, "I'm not taking tenth-grade English this year." They have to take it. But in, in terms of all the other things, and so we also have limits as to how few students can be in a course before we can't run it.
That's right. I, I, I don't know that exact number, but I've heard some, some numbers like, oh, there's only fourteen kids, students signed up for that. We're not going to run that. They're going to have to choose, you know, option B on their list of electives.
Correct.
And put them in that schedule. Yep. All right, Appendix Three. I guess what I would just note on, on Appendix Three, it's just a one-sheeter. It's the best way, and the reason I put this in here is I, I think it's the best way to kind of just see the overall budget, fund by fund, and compare it year to year and see what the differences are. It kind of just captures the total revenues and the total expenses of each fund and then of the total district. Appendix Four through Six gives a lot of specificity of the twenty-five thousand different budget codes we have and how they're all spread across the different funds. Unless there were specific questions that you had based on your reading, I'd like to jump to page a hundred and eleven at this point. Again, we put that there for transparency's sake and for people to really who want to dig in on, how much do you spend on natural gas? Well, you can find the line that says natural gas. Appendix Seven, we're not also going to camp out on this one because by the time our deadline was to get this to you on May ninth, we were right in the process of loading into the forecasting software. We were reliant on a vendor to do that for us, and so we just could not pull it off and get that done. We are working on refreshing that, and we're going to, this is one area where I do feel strongly that we need to pull out of the budget book and refresh it with the correct forecast. What we have in here is the December seventh, the last forecast that we did. So you've seen these numbers. These were part of a presentation we did on December seventh, so I'm going to bypass those for now. And when we get that done, I'm going to do a special, we'll, we'll just talk about the five-year forecast, probably no later than June twenty-first. I'm hoping that we have it ready for the June seventh. It's not that far out from being done.
And would that also reflect any decisions of the state legislature?
We might be able to actually work that in. So if we found out we were going to get another two hundred thousand or a million dollars in special ed, we could easily slot that in and go from there. Yep. All right, Appendix Eight. The reason we, this is new, this is a new appendix that we haven't had before, but the reason we put this is just to, again, provide even more transparency as to how our schools are staffed and how we come up with the staffing, the starting points for all of our buildings. So you could, you could take this document, you could look, and you could go to Elton Hills, Falwell, Longfellow, Overland, Pinewood, Riverside, Washington, and you're going to see these positions reflected in those schools. And if you see more than that, it's because the principal also had some compensatory money or some Title I money to stack on top of this. But this is the floor. This is the base, the minimum that you're going to see at each of those buildings in those positions. If we modified anything, which we did very few modifications this year, other than we cut the site supply budgets by five percent, just like we cut the district-wide supply and contracted services budgets by five percent, we tried to put it in red, but if it's not in a red, then it's been that way, at least since last year. And then I would pop into Appendix Nine, and this is some very good reading material about all of the proposed budget reductions that we had in January that we brought forward as our initial ideas and what we planned to do, unless we heard any strong feedback against them. And I would say the only one that stands out that we did not fully implement was idea number twenty-two on this list, eliminate the inside-out payment. We had decided that it would be in our best interest to keep that program for at least one more year so that we can look for ways to expand on that partnership. So we did not reduce that from the budget. But we have followed through, I believe, in my opinion, on all of the other things in And then the very last part, the very last three pages, so one forty-four, one forty-five, one forty-six, these were the twenty-three themes we heard and we, that we told you about from our, our, what I thought was extensive community engagement. It probably could have been even way more extensive, but it was within the time parameters that we had. These were the themes that we collected from all those different conversations and surveys, and then our bold is the administration's response to how we, we use that feedback in building this budget. So I think that, that goes to show that if you give feedback around here, it doesn't go on deaf ears. Our superintendent and myself, and I know you as school board members, take it seriously, and, and we wanted to document that and show that to you. So I will stop there, and then we can go to questions and answers, if you'd like.
Maybe, if I may, just a process question, John, and I'm not remembering off the top of my heads. What are we hoping will be board members' process for the June seventh and June twenty-first meetings regarding the budget?
That's right. So for June seventh, I'll come back, I'll actually use the PowerPoint that I had made in Stuck-in Board Docs. We'll probably have the five-year forecast, so we can expand on, if you were to approve this budget on January, or June twenty-first as it's laid out, this is what the impact would be on the, on the five-year roadmap. So we want to give that opportunity on June seventh, and then we don't expect you to actually move this to action or approve this until June twenty-first. So, and that's perfectly laid out and timed out that it will be the exact right amount of time we need.
Ms. Nathan.
So in your background information, you clarify every year that we call this a budget, but what's the difference between the expenditure authorizing versus how, how we view this budget in terms of being an expenditure authorizing document, not a, and, and what changes might happen, and then how you bring those changes to us over the course of the year?
Sure. So to actually start spending money legally on July first, we do need an approved budget for you by the night of June thirtieth. So that's why we time it out this way. So this, what is in here as it's laid out through all those different codes in the appendices three to six or whatever, is really, that's our limit. That's what we're allowed to spend. Now, if we need to make an adjustment to that, which we usually do, nobody can perfectly foretell twelve months from now on every dollar that we will need or, or have to spend. We come to you at least twice a year, sometimes three times a year, with what's called budget revision, where we ask you to approve updates. And sometimes we're actually lowering budgets. We're going to be bringing you a budget revision actually on June seventh for the current year that we're in, and it's going to be lower than what we had asked for before because of all the vacant positions we've had. We just don't need to be authorized to spend X millions of dollars when, when we're not filling those positions. So we're going to actually ask you to reduce the budget for the current year. But sometimes it's the other way around, where we need to ask for, you know, we, we just ran out of funds for kindergarten teachers, and we had an influx of kindergarteners, so we need another two kindergarten teachers, and that gets included in a budget revision, and we're authorized to do that.
I think you've told us everything we need to know. Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So unless there are any other questions or comments, it is seven twenty-eight, and we are adjourned.